A comment that's been requested via the green sheets on the table by the door. Public comment will begin after the superintendent and board reports. Tonight we'll be approving a revised agenda. Item BA-22-221 will be removed from our consent agenda, and it's expected that this agreement will return for consideration at our February 14th meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
I move that the revised agenda of Monday, January 24th, 2022 Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
For a second.
Second.
This is a roll call vote. Laurel?
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Merschbach.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Borchardine.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Vice President Garlock.
Aye.
Tonight, we have one public hearing, the Franklin Middle School Window and Door Replacement Project. Board Secretary Day, have we received any written correspondence related to the public hearing on tonight's agenda?
We have not received any written correspondence regarding this evening's public hearing.
Do we have anyone who has requested to address the board this evening regarding our published hearing?
We do not.
Our public hearing is now officially closed, and we will move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Bush, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you so much, Vice President Garlock, and happy to be here tonight, and we'll be talking about what January brings. And part of what January brings is discussions for next year's schooling options. And so, high schoolers are talking about courses they're going to take next year. We've already had some freshman orientations, but also, our district offers magnet school opportunities, and this is when the lottery is open. It opened a couple weeks ago and will remain open until later February. And just as a quick highlight, we have five magnet schools within our district. Three of those are elementary schools, that being Johnson Steam Academy, which focuses on STEM plus the arts; Cedar River Academy, which focuses on sustainability; and Kenwood Leadership Academy, which focuses on leadership, specifically the Covey Habits of Leadership. And then, we have two of our middle schools, which are also magnet schools, McKinley Steam Academy, which is actually a direct feeder there from Johnson Steam Academy; and then, Roosevelt Corridor Career Academy, and also known as RCCBA. And so, those options are available for all of our families, and they could submit their interest via the lottery, which can be found in our website. Or if there's any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to your school, and they can help you through that process. Also, just as a reminder, and I did discuss this the last time that we were together, it's also the season for preschool and kindergarten enrollment. That opens on February 1st, so just as a reminder to our families, that this is the time to start getting those little ones enrolled. And we have, if there's any questions, you can certainly call your neighborhood schools. You can also call the district, but we have more information on that on our website as well, so that families can get their little ones enrolled for preschool and/or kindergarten enrollment. And then, lastly, January also brings inclement weather. And so, we have certainly been experiencing this, as lots of other districts have been experiencing this. I sent out some communication via our newsletter on Friday, but just as a review, that this is never an easy process, and every single day brings different dynamics or conditions. So, just wanted everyone to know what some of those conditions are that we consider when we're making weather decisions, which is certainly the wind chill, temperature, precipitation, wind gusts, the combination of all those things together, and then, as well as, of course, weather warnings versus weather advisories, and even road conditions. So, we have had four inclement weather days. Some of those have been delays, some of those have been cancellations, but not one factor was the common thread with any of those days. So, the first cancellation was actually, at first, a two-hour delay because of road conditions, and we were hoping that would improve with the sun rising and getting the trucks out. However, it didn't improve, so that day actually turned into a cancellation. The leading factor on that day was road conditions. Versus last Friday, was certainly wind chill that was declining throughout the morning, and then, the temperature was negative 16, which was going to improve throughout the morning, but also, the wind gusts were kicked up. On top of that, it was a Friday, which if we have a late start, changes our schedule. We actually had a staffing concern that afternoon as well. We couldn't have enough drivers with the shift of the schedule. So, all those factors didn't make it a delay, it made it a cancellation, and we know that puts a burden on our families when we actually have school cancellations. So, we'll keep doing our best. I know everyone would kind of like a single formula, but it's a lot of factors that we consider, and the team works really hard. And I just want to give a shout out right now to our Transportation Department, who helps drive roads really early in the morning, starting about 2:00 a.m. And I drive the south side, they're driving the north side, and we just take those weather, those road conditions into consideration as well, and just want to make sure everybody's safe. And so, between local meteorologists, the National Weather Service, it's just a lot of people trying to make that decision as soon as possible and communicate, and we try to make those decisions by 5:30 a.m. When we can make it the night before, because it's absolutely predictable, and the National Weather Service says this isn't going to change before morning, then we can sometimes make those decisions the night before. So, we know it's frustrating. Everybody would like to know, absolutely, I would too, quite frankly, but we'll always try to make those decisions by 5:30 a.m. So, really appreciate the input and the questions that have come from the community and staff on that. And that is all I have for you today, Director Garlock.
Thank you, Superintendent Bush. We appreciate the perils of weather in Iowa in the winter, so thank you for making those hard decisions. Do we have any board reports this evening? Okay, next, we will hear from those who have requested to address the board. Laurel, do we have any members of the public that have requested to address the board?
Yes, we do.
How many speakers do we have signed up tonight?
I have eight speakers who have registered to speak.
Okay, thank you. Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speakers to please state your name and your address for the record when called to the podium. With eight speakers this evening, you'll be given five minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time limit allotted to each speaker. Board Secretary Day will serve as our timer and indicate when your time has expired. The time is yours to use and may not be yielded to another speaker. If you have submitted a request to address the board and choose not to speak, in the interest of equity and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. Also, to, in order to abide by the open meetings law, I'd like to remind our speakers that there will be no dialogue between board members and the public during this time, except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individual speaking. We have received all requests and will listen to all that have been submitted. We ask that the audience and the speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for everyone in attendance. This board will have zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Laurel, would you please call our first speaker?
Our first speaker this evening is Tanya Street, and Tanya is here with regards to school board appreciation.
Tanya, and I'm a mom of... Like I said, I'm a mom of a student at Kennedy High School, and I wanted to share my appreciation with you guys in keeping our students safe. A petition was when, had gone out, and I would like to go over the petition, as well as some comments that people, taxpayers, have had written out. And so, I'm going to start out with, I, along with others here tonight, would like to take some time to present a positive message of support and thanks to the Cedar Rapids Community School District School Board. A petition was created for those Cedar Rapids Community School District taxpayers and the CRCSD families who appreciate the COVID mitigation strategies, to simply have a way to express their thoughts about these issues in a more organized and collective manner. I will now read the introduction text of the petition, and then, begin reading the comments from the petition. I am here, or we are here in support of the CRCSD School Board about their decisions to continue a mask mandate and hold vaccine clinics for students' families who choose to get vaccinated. The CRCSD Board members were elected in a fair democratic election on November of 2021. The elected members were clear in their support of the mask mandate before the election day, and were voted in to their positions by the CRCSD taxpaying voters. I would like to share this hard copy of the petition with the CRCSD School Board members and the CRCSD superintendent. The signatures on this petition will represent the CRCSD taxpayers. Currently, there are 410 signatures on this petition. There are currently 87 comments in the petition as well. I would like to take some time now and begin reading some of the comments. In signing this petition, I am supporting the students, educators, staff, and democracy. Thank you for protecting teachers like my mom. You are doing amazing work to keep our kids safe. Thank you. Thank you for the time and effort you unselfishly give to the Cedar Rapids community. Although I am not from the district, I stand in solidarity with the board members supporting science-backed tools to mitigate COVID, Chair of the Disability Caucus of the Iowa Democratic Party. Thanks to all our school board members, you are appreciated. I researched everyone up for, or I researched everyone up for the election before voting. I full support the Cedar Rapids Community School Board members who support the mask mandate to keep our schools healthy. I support the Cedar Rapids Community School District teachers, staff, and board. Thank you to our wonderful CRCSD School Board members and our district leadership for steering the ship these last two years. We support the school and the mandates! Thank you, school board members who follow and believe in science for doing your part to protect our kids and community, and trying to be part of the solution rather than someone who would prefer we stand in a pandemic forever. Let our schools decide. Thank you, Cedar Rapids Community School District, for supporting masks. You are sparing so many children from serious consequence, the consequences of COVID infection. The school board members were elected in a fair democratic election. As a registered nurse, I want to thank the school board members and administration for protecting the students, and thus, many more in our community. There are more comments, but I would like to go ahead and hand this hard copy to the secretary to pass off.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rod Stadler. Rod is here to speak about violations.
Rod Stadler, Cedar Rapids, Iowa. Violations committed by CRCSD. Superintendent Bush Pitcher was supplied where she was not wearing a mask in a room of 250 people at the Iowa School Board meeting in Des Moines, Iowa, November 17th, 18th, November of 2021. I have that photo. Jennifer Borchardine also attended the Iowa School Board meeting on the same date, where she was seen receiving an award in front of 1,500 people without wearing a mask. Masks have been proven to hinder a child's development. Many studies have been conducted. Brown University published one on November 26, 2021, which showed masking the children hindered their development by 23% compared to that of their non-mask peers. CRCSD academics are at least 10% below the state average, and 30% of the children have left the gifted program. A study was conducted that showed that the children could recognize facial expressions nearly 100% of the time when the person they were observing was not masked, but when the other person was masked, they could only distinguish facial expressions 18 to 25% of the time. There is a study that was conducted that showed over a dozen harmful pathogens the children are subjected to when wearing a mask 18, or eight to 10 hours a day, which are more harmful than COVID-19. Masks have been proven to cause hypercapneic carbon dioxide toxicity. Psychologists are stating wearing masks increase anxiety and physical stress in our children. CRCSD laws they are violating. CRCSD violated their authority by requiring masks. For IR code states that school districts can mandate what a student may not wear, but they cannot mandate what a student can wear, in which a meeting with Superintendent Bush stated that is correct, which she confirmed the mask mandate was illegal. DOE 279.58 School Dress Code Policies. You are committing Munchausen Syndrome by proxy, now known as factitious disorder imposed by another FDIA. You are committing coercion, which is in violation of 21 CFR 50.23/24, which is illegal to coerce another human being to do anything, let alone an emergency use authorization status, EUA, which the CRCSD School Board Administration has been informed on numerous occasions. You still have not obtained informed consent from anyone in accordance with the FDA Code 21 USC 360BBB-3 and its 46-page document on how to obtain informed consent. You are practicing medicine without a license per Iowa Code 147.2 and 147A.21. You are violating every one of the NERMB codes. The vaccine clinics you advocated for did not obtain informed consent FDA Code 21 USC 360BBB-3 per its 46-page document on how to obtain informed consent, then the CRC can and will be held liable. Also, the number of cases increased 50% after the children received the jab at that clinic. It went from 45 cases to 66 the following week. You were placed on, you were placed on notice November 22nd, 2021, and you had until November 26th, 2021 to comply. Otherwise, we the people will consider the corporate veil pierced, for you have committed crimes against humanity, violated your oath of office, and committed numerous crimes against Iowa and federal laws. You were informed you are violating 18 USC 241, Conspiracy Against Rights. You were informed you are violating 18 USC Deprivation of Rights Under Color of Law. Which are the following felonies would you like to be implicated? Your agreement without consent means you would like to be charged with all of them. FYI, the maximum penalty is 99 years in prison and up to $100 million fines. 18 USC 2331 and 802, Acts of Domestic Terrorism Resulting in Death of American Citizens. 18 USC 2339, Conspiracy to Commit Acts of Terrorism. 18 USC 175, Funding and Creating a Biological Weapon. 18 USC 1001, Lying to Congress. 18 USC 2384, Seditious Conspiracy. 15 USC 8, Market Manipulation Allocation. 15 USC 19, Interlocking Directions. 15 USC 1 through 3, Conspiracy to Criminal Commercial Activity. You have been informed that we the people will be seeking impeachment and retribution both personally and professionally. You were informed that we the people will and have formally complained and filed against your bonds. You have been informed that we the people would be suing you under color of law. You have been informed that we the people would file criminal charges against the CRCSD School Board Administration and faculty involved.
Our next speaker is Rita McCord. Rita is here to speak on the topic of support for mitigation.
That statement comes from outside of this community. It comes from outside of this state. You can hear it at a Nashville School Board meeting, and I'm pretty sure it shows up at other ones across the nation. But it is my pleasure instead to read, oh, I'm Rita McCord, sorry, I live on Willamette Road Northeast. It is my pleasure instead to read comments from this community, the community I love. "As a former CRCSD employee," writes one of the petitioners, "I applaud your efforts of doing what you can to protect your students and staff. As a current parent in the College Community School District, I wish our school board stood up for our students and kept the mask mandate the way you guys have. Thank you for taking..." Here's another one. "Thank you for taking care of our kids and school staff by continuing to support a mask mandate. I support CRCSD teachers, staff, and board. Doing the right thing!" Double exclamation point. "Keep up the good work!" Double exclamation point. "Thank you to everyone on the school board who is supporting masking and testing!" Exclamation. "It is so important to act responsibly and keep the community safe. I fully support our newly-elected school board members. Thank you for doing what's best for our students and their educations!" Exclamation point. "Thank you for being mindful of everyone's safety and for science-based decision-making. I support our school board and mitigation efforts to keep our teachers and kids safe until such measures can be lifted safely. The school board members were voted in a free and fair election. They should remain on the board. Protect our kids!" Double exclamation point. "Thank you for keeping everyone safe. Thank you to everyone on the school board who is supporting masking and testing!" Exclamation point. "It is so important to act responsibly and keep the community safe. Thank you for being mindful of everyone's safety and for science-based decision-making. I support the members of the properly and fairly-elected CRCSD School Board. So thankful for our board and what they do to keep students and staff safe. I support our school board to make the best decision for our children. Vaccine and masks help save lives and keep schools open. Thank you for making data-driven decisions. Thank you for keeping our kids and community safe!" Exclamation point. "Thank you to the school board for taking action to keep our kids and teachers safe. Masks do not harm children or adults. Thank you for standing up for kids!" Exclamation point. "We need to keep everyone as safe as we can!" Exclamation point. "As a student and doing research of my own, I believe that the COVID guidelines put in place are an important thing to keep around for a while. Masks have been proven to help decrease transmission of SARS-CoV-2. This is a valid public health measure. As the second-largest district in the state, please continue to lead by example. I continue to be amazed with the CRCSD Board and Superintendent Bush's professionalism and focus on student and staff safety throughout the past two years. Thank you. I am a child, and I think that we should require masks to keep the children in the schools safe, so we do not get sick. Thanks for taking a sensible and safe approach to protecting students, staff, and their vulnerable families from unnecessary risk of COVID exposure. I am proud of my school district choosing to keep everyone who walks into school safe, especially during a pandemic. I wish the mask mandate could extend through all the extracurricular activities as well. Thank you for trying to keep all safe. Please support the safety of children and staff in schools and respect the public's election of school board members. For my sister, who is a teacher in the district, but unable to work, to return to work because an illness leaves her immunocompromised, and for every other immunocompromised staff and student, keep up the good work!" Exclamation point. Great job doing the right thing and supporting the teachers. Thanks for all you do for our students and staff. Thank you for keeping our schools safe, and I'll stop there. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jessica Camacho. Jessica is here with regards to school board appreciation.
Hi, Jessica Camacho, Dawn Avenue, Southwest Cedar Rapids, Iowa. I made the decision to move my current kindergartner to the Cedar Rapids School District, in part because of the decisions that were made by the school board and their decisions with COVID, so I just want to say thank you for that. I'm going to go ahead and continue to read the question, these statements that were submitted by local people in appreciation for the decisions you've made. "Thank you CRCSD School Board for keeping mask mandates in place to protect students and staff, especially those who have fragile immune systems. Thank you. Even if you are triple vaccinated, you can still get COVID-19 and pass it on to others. Mask up for our students and their families. As an employee of the CRCSD, I fully support all COVID-19 mitigation strategies. The district organized its own vaccine rollout and has a clear standards in place for when to stop wearing masks. Thank you for all your dedication and to keep all safe. I want to thank the school board for putting students' health and safety first during this pandemic. I am appalled by the way certain people are behaving at school board members, meetings, and their selfish viewpoints and bully tactics. Please continue to do what is best for all of our students, and I know that I appreciate the job that you are doing to keep my child safe while at school, as well as the students that are in our classrooms. I am glad you are using science and data to guide your decisions. I fully support you. Thank you for continuing to serve our students. Masks are making a difference. Protection is key. Please keep our student, our children safe by following scientifically-proven protocols. I support all members of the school board. My grandchildren attend three different schools in the CRCSD. I've subbed in the past as a para, but not during COVID for the past two years. Thank you for keeping my grandchildren, their teachers, administration, staff, and their classmates, parents, safe while they are at school. All these measures matter and help to prevent the spread. Thank you for leading the action to role-model how to end this pandemic. Keep our kids safe, or keep our kids healthy, please keep the masks for now. I support the CRCSD Board of Education. I support the Cedar Rapids School Board members and the Life Protection Lifesaving Mask Mandate. Thank you for keeping the mask mandate and keeping our students safe. I stand by the CR Community Schools Leadership and Board. Thank you for working to keep our kids safe. Protect teachers, staff, and students. How does this need to be a petition? Thank you to the CRCSD School Board and district for continuing to do what is best for health and safety of our staff, students, families, and the community. Thank you for protecting our kids and the staff of CRCSD. The evidence behind masks and vaccine is clear. Thank you for at least trying to keep our kids safe. Please keep all mitigation strategies in place. Do not let a few loud voices deter you from doing the right thing, protecting staff and students. Everyone has the right to go to public school safely. Taking away maskings and not encouraging vaccinations makes it unsafe. Allowing uncontrolled spread takes away the parental choice as a parent will no longer have a choice to send their kids to school if staff are all out sick. Thank you for promoting safe learning environments for our students. Thank you for protecting our kids. Please know that many of us appreciate the evidence-based mitigation measures you've kept in place. Thank you for keeping our kids and staff safer. As a CRCSD teacher, I appreciate the concern for the safety of our staff and students in our district. We have a much lower positivity rate than other schools in our county that do not have masking in place. Clearly, it's doing what is intended. My grandkids attended local schools. I believe the school board is doing their civic duty to maintain a safe and unbiased environment. Thank you to CRCSD school board members for doing the right thing to keep our children safe. I support the school board and all the decisions that it make -- that they make for the public education students and staff. I believe they have their best interests at heart. I thank them for their work.
Our next speaker is Kathy Klein. Kathy is here to speak about school board appreciation.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Klein, and I am currently a special education para with the Cedar Rapids Schools, and I've been both a para and a teacher in the district for a total of 20 years. I am also the creator of the petition that various people are reading comments from tonight. So why did I create this petition? Well, I wanted to create a petition that would allow any CRCSD taxpayer or any CRCSD family member the opportunity to voice their thoughts and opinions regarding their support of your decisions to implement a mask mandate and to create the vaccine clinics for CRCSD families. I created this petition because these CRCSD taxpayers and families, their voices matter too, and their thoughts matter equally to those who oppose the measures. I created the petition simply to give everyone a voice as we all try to work together as a community to make decisions that affect all of our students, all of their families, and the staff of the CRCSD. So in the spirit of full transparency, I feel important to share that I did not sign my own petition. Although as an employee of the district, I feel very strongly that I too have a right to express my thoughts and concerns about school board decisions that affect the security and safety of my work environment, but I am not who the petition was for. I also did not allow any members of my family to sign the petition for the same reason. I am only an employee of the district. My tax dollars go to a different school district, as I don't live in Cedar Rapids. My children are grown, so I am also not a CRCSD family member. Therefore, it was not ethical for me to sign the petition. Since my signature and comments are not on the petition, I wanted to take my remaining time to tell a bit about my COVID story. I have type 2 diabetes and underlying lung issues. Both conditions make me immunocompromised. I have thrown everything but the kitchen sink at preventing getting COVID, because getting COVID is very dangerous for me. Particularly if I would have caught the Delta variant, I had a very high chance of being hospitalized, put on a ventilator, and possibly dying. I am thrice vaccinated because of my personal desire to live. I have also always worn a mask at school and in public because not only do I want to live, but because I want others to live around me, even the stranger standing next to me in the Walmart checkout line. I was able to get vaccinated safely at two CRCSD vaccine clinics held for employees in the district, and I was also grateful for the decision to mandate masks in the school until concrete mitigation data is reached. It has made me feel safer at my workplace, and more importantly, it has allowed me to show up to work, to help my students reach their full potential every day, which is kind of what we all want for the students in the district anyway. So, in closing, I would like to personally thank every school board member and administrator for these decisions, because you have helped me stay healthy this past year. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Craig Sealy. Craig is here to speak about agendas, ideologies, sources, and teaching methods.
Thank you for this opportunity, Honorable School Board, Craig Sealy, Cedar Rapids. Once in a while, I think about masks possibly being a transport for all kinds of microorganisms and pathogens. That's one of my thoughts. So Ronald Reagan said, we are only, when he was president, "We are only one generation away from losing our freedom." Well, the people that care about America and everything that our founding fathers gave us as they were guided by the good Lord of the Bible, they wanted to stay by our Creator God, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. In other words, freedom. Let freedom ring. Well, people that are suspect take this another way. They say, "Well, this might be a way to fulfill our agendas and ideologies, whether they're constitutional or not. Let's really mess up a generation of young people." Isn't it amazing how you -- you know lawyers will do this. They'll take the same law and free a person and imprison a person, like the way those poor people are being treated from January 6th. Molded all over the place, no drinking water. They aren't even allowed their cancer medicine. It is an abomination, and they are political prisoners. But where the rubber meets the road nationally with the public school system, if you watch the news like I have the opportunity to do all day long, people, parents who care about their kids want to know what they're being taught. They want 100% transparency, because one of the ways of us losing all of this and not having it anymore, think about it, is to mess up a whole generation of young people. And then they can be led by people that want to do that to this country. So, I'll give you an example. COVID actually did help to expose what's supposedly going on in this country, because the education system got onto the internet, and the parents started learning what was going on, and they became appalled. Why should things change? Why kill the goose that laid the golden egg? But it happened right here in Iowa. I was on NPR, and I suggested turning the internet into a utility, and we were talking about public education, and there were a lot of people from the state of Iowa on there. And I said, "Let's just have broadband all over the state." And they said, they got excited, and they said, "The infrastructure is already there. We can do it. Make our education standardize for everybody in the state of Iowa. Equal playing field." So what happened? The suspect legislators voted against it, because they didn't want exposed what was in the curriculum. How ridiculous and selfish is that? Are young people in the rural community need to have an equal education? So what's going to happen, and I'd hate to see it, is if the right people get into government, they are going to find out who's behind all this, and they are going to be the FBI will be in their favor, and there's going to be the biggest bugging system that you have ever seen in the United States of America. Phones will be bugged. Homes will be bugged. Cars will be bugged. Every room that has any type of education will be bugged to find out what is going on. It'll kind of be a D-Day of stopping this Marxism that wants to destroy our wonderful country.
Sealy, your time is up.
Thank you.
Our last speaker this evening is Lawrence Wenkowsky. Lawrence is here to speak about counterpoint.
Yeah, Lawrence Wenkowsky, Cedar Rapids. First, I got to say, last meeting, there was a lot of people talking, providing different points on different topics, and I want to thank them for all being civil and being respectful. And I mean, there was different points, but everyone who came up here was respectful. God, what a concept. And that, you know, the other thing is, you know, start the meeting, they talked about, you talked about appropriate language. Please define that. And I remember when George Carlin had a seven words you can never say on television. Well, that don't exist anymore. Language is subjective as to what's appropriate, and if I'm going to say something, if I can't say something here, students and staff should not be able to say it in our schools. And I totally believe that. I just watched the whole series of Gotham. You know, and in that whole series with all the blood and everyone getting shot, I can't recall any swearing, and I was just surprised. Five seasons of 20 episodes a season. So, next thing is, you know, we all have past lives that no one knows about, and that, you know, we just don't talk about it. I was brought up Catholic. Tried another religion, went back to being a Catholic. When they wouldn't marry me, went and became a Methodist, and it's my choice whether I go to church or not. I don't come to public meetings to listen to scripture or people telling me how everything's based on God. I have some very good friends who are very religious, you know, and they never say this, and they never try to impose their religion or religious beliefs on me. And, you know, in some respects, being a public school system, that's sort of disrespectful, because not everyone is Christian. And that, so why should we be disrespectful to some at our -- because we think it's appropriate? If you really want to go preach religion, go down to Green Square Park, and that, you can -- and that's the way I look at it. You know, if people come in here and they threaten a school district about all this and that, here's my question. What the hell have you done for the school district lately? What positive thing have you done for the school district, other than possibly volunteering at your school, your kid's school? Do you go to some of the other schools where the families cannot, don't have time because they're working two, three jabs? Do you go volunteer there? Do you work on any of the committees that are throughout the school district? I highly doubt it, but you're willing to come in here, waste our time, and be anti-productive and make this a less than better system than it could be if you just stayed home and didn't say anything. The goal here is, the only way we make this a better community, a better school district, is if we do it collectively. We cannot do it, you know, sit there and fight the system. You know, people say, "Oh, we're going to sue the district," and that. Well, you're hurting the district by doing that, because, sure, you may get money or that, but it costs us legal funds. Sure, if our insurance company pays for it, I guarantee it's going to raise the insurance rates. Oh, that'll cost us money, so less kids will get educated. You know, so it's time that people start being more civil, more understanding, and try to be part of the community, and, you know, leave your political viewpoints, you know, at home about, you know, whether, you know, one party, it's this party or that party, you know, both parties are screwed up. Let's just put it the way it is. They are both totally screwed up, and until we get both parties out of there, we're going to, not going to have a good government or school district. So that's another reason why we need to work together to make this a better school district. So, other than that, I want you to say, "Thank you very much," and stay warm.
That concludes our speakers.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the revised consent agenda. Are there any items that a board member would like to pull for a comment, question, or separate note? Okay, I'm hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the revised consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote due to the personnel report.
Director Merschbach.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Borchardine.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Vice President Garlock.
Aye. Moving on to administration, let's begin with the annual comprehensive financial report. Dave, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you for introductions of the team.
Thank you, Vice President Garlock. Tonight, we actually have Kevin Smith. He's a partner with RSM. He's going to do a presentation on this past year's audit. Kevin?
Good evening. I've got a brief presentation to go through the results from the fiscal year 2021 audit, and happy to answer any questions at the conclusion of the presentation. The first thing that we look at as a part of our audit process is the financial statements. So the new term for the financial statements is ACFER, and this document is the responsibility of management to put together the numbers, and our responsibility is to express an opinion on those financial statements, whether they're in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So the opinion that you see within that document by RSM is an unmodified or a clean opinion, so that is the highest level of assurance that you can receive from an audit process. There's other communication that we make to you at the end of the audit that's included in a letter, which would outline any sort of difficulties or disagreements that we had during the audit process. I'm pleased to report that there were none of those types of items to report to you. We had full cooperation from district personnel, access to all of the information that we needed access to to form our conclusion, and we did not have any other difficulties or significant adjustments to the financial statements that came up as a part of our audit work. We've got a few slides here just outlining some of the financial information from fiscal year 2001. I'll be brief with these. This first slide here just shows the total revenue of all of the governmental funds for the district. You will see an increase to $264 million in 2021 compared to 2020. A lot of that is the additional federal sources, the ESSR funds that were received by the district this past year. The next slide shows the expenditures by function. Clearly, instruction and support in the schools are the largest categories there. You will see an increase from 2020 to about $316 million. A lot of that, as you can see, is driven by the capital outlay, so the construction projects that are going on in the district. And then the last slide just shows the financial results from the two enterprise funds of the district, so the daycare and the nutrition services fund. You will see a decrease there in operating revenue. I think a lot of that was due to the virtual environment that was impacted a good portion of fiscal year 2021. of fiscal year 2021. Another part of our audit process outside of the financial statements is looking at, is performing our compliance audit, so auditing the federal grant programs of the district. That portion of the, of our report is in the back of the ACFER. That's where the compliance section is. So, this slide just outlines the, the results from, from our testing over, over compliance. The first item there notes that there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies reporting, reported over the financial statements. A few minor instances of non-compliance that are, the state requires us to put in the document very, very, very minor differences in certified enrollment that you'll see back there. And also, we need to report any sort of deficit in that position of, of any of the funds. So, those are the two things that you'll see within that state compliance section of our report. The single audit is the, the audit over the federal grant programs. In 2021, we tested two of the programs, so the ESAR funds and Title I. Both of those programs received unmodified or clean opinions as well. We did not have any findings reported or any internal control deficiencies as it relates to those grant programs. Those programs accounted for about 53% of the total federal dollars that were expended by the district in fiscal year 2021. And that concludes the presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions that any board members have.
Thank you, Kevin. We're really happy to hear that we've received clean opinions, and I think that's a testament to Dave and his team and the work that they do. Anyone on the board have questions or comments for Kevin or Dave?
I have a question. I know that Sheri, Lesky, and Dave have been just doing a tremendous job with internal checks to make sure that processing is, is following our internal structure. Was that examined?
Yes, yes. We don't, we don't give an opinion on internal control, but if we do come across any items that give rise to a significant deficiency or material weakness, we would report those to you. And those do include controls over the major transaction cycles of the district, so your payroll, your expenditures, your cash receipts, things of that nature.
Well, I'd like to thank you for the audit. I know they take a very long time. There's a lot involved. Also, I'd like to thank Sheri and David. I know that you guys are just knocking it out of the park, so thank you for that.
Other questions or comments from the board? Okay, so, all those in favor of approving the annual comprehensive financial report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Thank you. Next, we have a request to the SBRC for special education administrative costs. Do we have any questions from the board members?
I don't have a question, but I would just like to make a comment that this is an annual occurrence. When, with the SBRC, we have to apply to the SBRC every year for extra support for special education because, again, I'm going to sound like a broken record, I've been saying this for a while. When Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act was passed, it was passed with a 60% funding promise, and it's only ever been supported at 12 to 13%. So, we always run a deficit every year.
Thank you, Director Borchardine, for pointing that out. Other comments, questions? All those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Thank you. The last administrative item is a request for SBRC for additional funding regarding our statewide voluntary preschool program enrollment. Board members, do you have any questions for Dave? Okay, all those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, the next item on our agenda is a resolution for the UEN legislative priorities for the 2022 legislative session. As the legislative liaison for the board, I'd like to just review those very quickly, mostly for the benefit of the public, before we actually vote on that. There are five priorities that were outlined by the Urban Education Network. They do coincide very closely with the priorities established by the Iowa Association of School Boards. There are five of them that we've included in our resolution tonight, one being adequate school funding. We're calling for legislative approval of a 5% SSA. The second one is student opportunity equity, which would increase resources for our English-language learners, for minorities, and for early childhood expenditures. The third one would address the critical teacher, staff, and administrative shortage that we seem to be experiencing right now. Number four is funding and capacity for mental health services. And the fifth one is recognizing and protecting local control of public schools. So, do we have any additional questions or comments about the resolution?
I would just like to add an additional comment that I think UEN has great priorities. I'd like to advise the board to avoid a singular focus on only UEN priorities. I think it's important to note that while there is some crossover between IASB, there is also some things in IASB legislative priorities that would benefit us, such as asking for a school funding policy change that would actually reflect the real cost for special education. All of the other funding is, is kind of covered in, in the equity, school equity and student equity per pupil enrollment. Also, the school funding policy needs to be sufficient and timely. That is pointed out by IASB, so just wanted to share that.
Other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor of approving the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is for the public's information. The board will hold an exempt session at the conclusion of tonight's meeting to discuss strategy sessions for union and non-union employee groups as allowed by the Code of Iowa. Excuse me. Last on our agenda this evening is a presentation and update on community partners and the RFP process. I will turn the meeting over to Justin.
Thank you, Director Garlock. I'm going to be co-presenting tonight with Stephanie Neff, who manages our wellness programming as well as community partnerships, so we'll be presenting together tonight.
All right. Hello, good to see everyone. I will be reviewing the process for our school community partnership program. For those of you who have been on the board for a while, you've heard me speak about this before, so wanted to give you an update on where we are in our call to action, which is really to create that comprehensive system where we have alignment support, opportunities to celebrate and evaluate our community partnerships with organizations that provide services to our students, specifically those that are coming to our buildings and working directly with students. So, today, Justin and I will review the current state of the collaborative funded community partnerships, kind of a mid-year update for the current school year, and then describe some of the expected program outcomes for students served. And just as a reminder, or for those of you who are new to the board, the types of partnerships that we have, this is the structure that we've been developing over the last few years, looking at how we partner strategically with different organizations to really target those opportunity gaps that we have with certain groups of students, and how we develop and facilitate those relationships that we have with community partners who can build on the programming that we're providing and fill in gaps where needed. So, kind of to the left is, or to my left, I guess, is sponsored donors, volunteer programs, and then I really focus on the strategic partnerships, so that's mainly network and collaborative partners. And specifically, we're looking at today, our collaborative partners, who are our funded partners, receiving district dollars to come in and provide very specific, very targeted services to the students who need them. So, making sure that that alignment is there, doing data sharing, and really having good outcomes. This is the cycle that we go through, the little you are here icon is kind of where we are right now in terms of our request for proposal process. Historically, we've had a school, a full year RFP process where we've solicited proposals. The reason that we did that is because we got feedback from community organizations that were not providing services or able to receive funding from the district. And so, this creates kind of a more equitable opportunity for community organizations to propose their services and to receive financial support from the district. So, we actually are, for the first time, we have an RFP out right now for summer programming. What we found was that there was a pretty significant difference between school year programming and summer programming in terms of both our needs and outcomes and the way that community partner organizations provided programs and services. And so, we are soliciting proposals now through the end of this week, they're due on Friday, for summer programming that will specifically target learning loss in reading and math for students K-12. And then we will do another solicitation of proposals for next school year.
So, thinking through and looking at the visual that Stephanie just shared, we kind of have a cycle of how we, we look at things. And one thing we've been really excited about is the opportunity to have quarterly meetings with each of our community partners to really dig in to the data, looking at the outcomes that we're, we're hoping for at the beginning of the year that we set, and then see where we are in relation to that. So, we've had the opportunity to do a fall meeting with each of our partners, and now we're in the midst of doing a mid-year check-in with each of our partners to see where we are. And so, looking at the data that we've collected so far this year, we're going to share a little bit of that with you all. So, currently this year, we're serving 1,151 of our students, which is about 7% of our student population. So, when we break that down by funding, that's an investment of about $757 per student. When we look at who we're serving in terms of students, we know that we have kind of two buckets that our community partners fall under, so mental health and then equity partners. And so, each of those are kind of very targeted in their approach. When we look at the students that we're serving in terms of race, race and ethnicity, our mental health providers are serving about the same demographics as our regular population. But when we look at our equity partners, they're serving about 59% of non-white students compared to our district average, which is, which is higher. So, that tells us that we're serving the right students and we're, we're having the right students enrolled in our programming. When we look at IEP status, and so, I'm thinking about students who are served in our special education programming, our district average is about 15% of students served with IEPs. But when we look at our programming, about 23% of our students involved in programming are students who are served with IEPs. And that tells us that we're, we're getting the right supports in place for our students, specifically with our mental health partnerships. So, thinking through highlights and what's going well, like I said, as we're looking at our data of who's enrolled in our specific community partnership programming, we, we can see that we're serving the right students. We're also very excited about having another data piece that we can utilize this year. So, historically, when we were looking at social, emotional, health needs of students, we were really only able to look at, like, referrals and suspensions as, as metrics. This year, with our Panorama partnership, we're really able to dig into some of those social and emotional competencies, which give us more formative data where we can really target over time, you know, how we're moving the needle in supporting those foundational needs of our students. And then, again, highlights, we can see that we're beginning to narrow the gap between students served and the district average in terms of discipline referrals and attendance. So, we just want to highlight some of the, the key things that have emerged as we've been going through some of our meetings with our partners. When we look at our Youth Peace Project in collaboration with Kids First Law, they're doing a lot of work around restorative justice. And what we've found is students who have, who are working with Kids First and the Youth Peace Project, we have seen a 44% decrease in referrals in that programming. Beyond the Bell, who does a lot of mentoring services and academic-focused support with students, we've seen that students involved in that programming have seen a decrease by 88% when it comes to suspension, so very excited about that work. Empowering Youth of Iowa is targeted with our high school students in really supporting the academic credit recovery and improving grades. And we've found that students in that programming have decreased in-progress failing grades from 44% to 30%. Black, brown, and biracial students participating in Triple AP or the African-American Achievement Program have a higher sense of belonging compared to their peers who are not enrolled in that programming. And then, when we look at leaders and believers and achievers, we have seen a significant increase in attendance with students involved in that programming, in, in large part to the relationships that they've been able to develop. So, lots of celebrations that we're seeing and will continue throughout the course of the year to have conversations and collaborative opportunities with our partners to make sure that we're giving, providing the right services and that it's aligned to our, our district goals. And hopefully, we'll be able to come back to you at the end of the year with some, you know, experiences from our partners, be able to share those experiences with you in, in terms of the experience that they're having and the students are having.
So, just to wrap up, what we've really focused on this school year is targeting, targeting partner organization scope of services to reach the outcomes. Sometimes, when we partner with organizations, they have a big vision for what they want to achieve, and it's, it's hard to narrow that down to specific students so that we can get the data that shows whether or not they're making an impact. So, we've really worked with all of our partner organizations to be specific in who it is they're serving, when they're serving them, where they're serving them, and what their exactly the services are to reach the outcomes. And then, we're also leveraging the data dashboard for real-time planning and adaptation, which is an amazing thing that our data specialists have created for us, where we can go into that dashboard, our partner organizations can go into that dashboard, they can see the students that they are serving real-time in terms of attendance, in terms of grades, in terms of disciplinary referrals. And so, they have an opportunity to very quickly respond and talk with those students to develop a correction plan to get those students back on track, instead of just guessing at those things and then at the end of the year saying, well, you had attendance issues or you had disciplinary issues. So, really great tool for all of us. And then, as I mentioned, we released the RFP for Summer Learning Loss Recovery Partnerships. Our next steps are to continue to leverage that data for decision-making and identifying targeted, high-impact programs that affect behavior, attendance, and academics, and then align the services with learning loss recovery and social, emotional health outcomes. Looking at both of those things together really helps us understand what the barriers are to learning, knowing that it's not always academic. So, taking all those factors into account and looking at the whole child. And as Justin said, we'll be preparing another report for you at the end of the year with additional data, very specific program outcomes, and some student voice as well. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Director Humbles?
First of all, thank you for updating us. And my question is, how do people or organizations find out about opportunities to submit a program to the district? I, I think that, that's my question, because I know sometimes folks are saying, how do I find out about these opportunities where I can support the Cedar Rapids Community School District?
Sure, absolutely. So, what our process is, is when we release an RFP, our communications team helps us get it out on the website, social media, in addition to just trying to spread the word widely as much as possible with organizations who have expressed interest in the past. We did have a registration process for partner organizations last year, and so, when we develop an RFP, any organization that has gone through that process that we're aware of, we try to send it out to them directly. And then, of course, throughout the year, we have different organizations contacting, various people within the district. Our attempt right now, or our goal, is to try to get all those directed back to Justin or I so that we can explain that process to them and kind of walk them through it to make sure that they're having the same opportunity to apply for that funding.
Can I ask one more?
Sure.
I just have one more.
Go ahead.
An evaluation- An evaluation at the end of each cycle, or the time that these, the money is provided. Is there a summary provided to show what different some of these programs have, have made? And is it possible, or I'd like to suggest that it would be nice if we could also see some of the reports. I think that is helpful for us, I know for me, I'll just speak for myself.
Yes, I will let Justin add his comments too, but absolutely, now that we have the data dashboard in place, last year was the first year that we put the data dashboard in place. We were kind of training all the community partners on how to use it and what it meant and all that. This year with Panorama, we have those additional indicators, so sometimes we're not necessarily moving the needle on academics, or behavior, or attendance in the timeframe that we're measuring in. And so Panorama gives us some opportunities to see maybe how we're impacting kids in other ways. So putting all of that together should give us a really nice report at the end of this year, so thank you for asking that. Anything you want to add?
Yeah, I was going to say, Stephanie and I have just been talking already about how we can get both quantitative data related to the outcomes that we've set, as well as some qualitative data, getting some student voice in the space, as well as the community partner voice, so they can talk through what their experiences are like. Because we know with academics, sometimes it takes a long time to move the needle on, on that data, but we know that there's some really great experiences that folks are having. So we want to uplift those experiences, as well as looking at the, the quantitative data that we're collecting.
Director Newman.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, congrats on getting this program up and running and, and getting that data out there. When you look at the student demo slides, I'll just pull out the IEP one, you said this tells us we're serving the right students. Were there benchmarks that you were trying to hit, and you hit those? Or were you getting through the first year, and now you're putting definite benchmarks in for the next year? Can we know what those are in advance?
If I'm not answering your question, please let me know. So the, the benchmark is kind of the district overall. So if we are serving 15% of, if 15% of our students have IEPs, we want, we expect that our equity partners will probably be serving about the same percentage as the district, but that our mental health partners, because of the, many of those students have mental health challenges as well, that our mental health partners will probably be serving more of those students, just like our equity partners, because they're targeted at students of color, or Latinx students, or different populations of students based on race or ethnicity, that they would be serving a much higher percentage than the total district overall. Does that answer your question?
I think so. Can I ask a follow-up?
Yes.
So I understand. So if we're serving, 15% of our population has an IEP, we expect to serve about, about 15% of that should be in these programs, so it's reflective of that population percentage, at least?
At a minimum, yes, that our numbers should be the same, but with the mental health programming, then we expect it to be higher. I don't know that we have ever talked about having kind of a target of, do we want to be serving double the number of IEP students? So that's not necessarily something that we've looked at, but more students that have an IEP getting those mental health supports than the demographics as a whole, I guess.
Thank you.
Director Borcheting.
I have a question about the data that partners are providing. Is that data that they're developing that's specific to their programs, or is there a data kind of base that's, district is using across all programs to be able to compare apples to apples?
Sure, and you can piggyback.
Happy to have to.
Yes, so we, there, there are some apples-to-apples data that we're using. So we have like iReady with our reading programming, map testing, as well as Panorama now gives us some apples-to-apples data across the district in terms of social emotional development, as well as referrals and suspensions. That's kind of the apples-to-apples data. Some partners do provide different metrics that they think are specific to their programming, and we always utilize that and take that into consideration, but we do want to make sure that we do have some of our, our district data that we have goals set around in terms of, in our buildings to utilize and monitor the progress.
And so just to be clear, that the funding stream does come out of dropout at-risk, and so is required by, it's not just what we feel like, it's also what we have to report to the state in regards to how we're supporting students who indicate that they might have, be at risk. Some of the at-risk measures are attendance. So if there is a significant attendance issue, and a program is saying, "That's something that we want to get after in our program," then that becomes a leading indicator for that specific program.
Are there, just to clarify, so is there, is there data that is aligned to culture, or student learning, or some of our strategic plan pillars that are the same across all partners external to district?
Yeah, that would be the, well, I guess if you're talking, are you talking specifically social, emotional?
I think inside its own focus, right? So all the social, emotional should have kind of the same reporting measure that aligns to strategic plan as defined by us.
Yes, yes. And Panorama offers that for us, but this is the first year that we've had that to be able to compare across.
So partners are using Panorama?
That's what we are measuring out, their outcomes on. If they want to submit other sources of data because they don't feel like Panorama is the best measurement, they can, but what we are measuring on is the district, what's aligned to our strategic plan.
So we have our system indicators on the strategic plan. So our equity indicator is absolutely what we're looking at as a school district, but then we have students who we're trying to close the gaps on in those equity goals, many of those students being served in these partnerships. So therefore, if it's a social, emotional measurement that we believe is the first indicator to support that student's progress and growth, then that hopefully then feeds into the data of the system indicator. So great question on that.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Thank you, Justin and Stephanie, for your presentation. It looks like we're getting some good data from the system, and we'll look forward to your year-end report as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. With no further business, we stand adjourned. Thank you all.